Yes, the Kita City Council Parks and Rec Commission and Planning Commission and Taylor. Go ahead and tell it what.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. It's good to see you all. And we've got a couple of people online, I believe. Um, so Alan's pulling up the presentation here. Um, so just as a kind of background reminder, um, this project came about from discussions that all three of your boards have now had about how, um, our current codes related to park land um, are basically not sufficient for making sure that as the city grows enough park space gets created to serve the needs of the town. Um, and so most recently at the February 12th City Council meeting, um, we got confirmation from the City Council that yes, you guys do want to work on this project. You want to be centrally involved in the project. So, um, we're basically, you know, you can think of this as kind of the kickoff meeting with these three boards being kind of the, um, serving as the project advisory committee for this, um, parks project. Um, unless the council wants to recruit any additional people to serve on this advisory committee, we would, it just seems pretty streamlined and easiest to do these three boards altogether. So what we're gonna do, can we screen share the presentation? Okay. One moment. Alan's gonna screen share our presentation here, um, which is going to be super brief because the goal of today isn't really for us to talk at you. It's really for you all to talk amongst yourselves. There are kind of three main questions that we have for you that'll help us know how to move forward. But, um, a big outcome of today's meeting is going to be you all discussing amongst yourselves, you know, what are your goals and priorities related to parks in the city as the city continues growing? Okay, so we've got the presentation shared on the screen now. If you could go uh, to the next slide. Is it showing? It's not showing the whole slide. Um, there's a way to do this. Click View. I think View. Kind of full screen. Great. Okay. Um, so yeah, I've said a bunch of those things. So, um, what we're gonna recommend and we'll get you all talking about this today is I'm just gonna stand up and look this way because, um, we're gonna recommend doing this in two phases. The first phase being kind of this like quick, um, you can think of it as like an interim solution. Um, a very simple and small code update that we could do almost immediately, um, to start requiring park space to be provided in subdivisions that are continuing to come in because we are still getting subdivision applications submitted. We're getting, you know, inquiries and pre-app requests for subdivisions. So we know that we're gonna keep getting these applications. Every application that we get, we have no way currently of requiring any park area to be provided, whether that's private park space owned by an HOA or public park space, which the city would take over if it meets our standards for taking over land. Um, but yeah, right now we have no teeth in our code to be able to require park area to get built. And for small subdivisions, maybe that's not such a big deal, but we've had subdivisions that have come in and met all the code requirements that are like, you know, 118 lots, for example. That's a really big subdivision to not have any, to not be able to require any park land to go in there. So that's, um, that's something we're proposing to do that is pretty low lift and we're proposing to do that, um, immediately because Phase Two, which I'm, I'm calling it Phase Two would be kind of the full version of this project. Um, we've thought this through and if, if we do the project right, Phase Two would take probably 12 to 18 months. And, um, preferably we would seek grant funding for that project because we would to do the project right and well, we would really need to hire a consultant to help us with that project. And so it's gonna be expensive. So, um, I don't know all the details of the budget, but there are definitely are grants available from the state for this kind of project. And, um, the timeline that I know, uh, for OP OPRD Oregon Parks and Rec Department, um, their grant funding cycle, we would seek funding from them in February or March of next year. So we wouldn't, you know, if we wanted to do this with a grant, we wouldn't start that project until next spring at the earliest. And then from there, it's another year, year and a half. In the meantime, we're still getting subdivision applications and more development's gonna come in without us being able to require any park space. So that's the reason that we're proposing this phased approach. Um, so let's talk a little bit more about what that's gonna look like. Can you go to the next slide? Um, so we wanted to pull this up on the screen. You have all these slides printed out in front of you, so it's probably easier for you to look at this on what's printed in front of you, but, um, just to give you an idea of what this full project or what we're calling Phase Two, um, would look like. These are, these are what we are imagining the project would look like. You could decide to scope it differently than this. If this is missing things that you think should be included in the project, or if there are parts of this that you think should be excluded. For example, maybe you don't think that an open house and online survey is the best public engagement activity to do. You want to do something different, right? There's flexibility here, but, um, this is what we're imagining. So probably four joint workshops with this group throughout the project. Um, hopefully this workshop will be productive enough to kind of count as that first one and get us rolling with, um, understanding what the goals and priorities of this group are. Um, and then, yeah, we're showing on here, you know, we'll need to hopefully seek grant funding, hire a consultant. Um, we would put out an RFP, a request for proposals to hire that consultant. And, um, it's gonna be important that we understand from you all ahead of time what those goals and priorities are so that we can make sure they're included in the RFP because that basically turns into our contract with the consultant. So we want to make sure from the start, we're capturing what it is you all want want included in this project. What do you want consultant to do? Um, so we hire the consultant, they, you know, carry out the tasks that we lay out in that, uh, project scope. And we have these joint workshops along the way to keep everyone on the same page and make sure that you're all, um, you know, involved and, uh, giving your input as much as, as much as you have and want to. Um, so anyway, this is all sort of a rough estimate of how much time each of those things would take, but we're looking at probably 12 to 18 months for all of that. Um, so that's, that's what we're, that's what we mean when we say kind of the full project for this, uh, project. Next slide. So this, um, kind of in the meantime interim solution is only one part of, uh, what, what the outcome of that full project would be. Um, I have gotten a sense through our conversations that, um, the, the full project would result in development code updates, parks master plan updates, possibly SDC updates. Um, I don't know for sure whether all of those warrant being updated because we haven't dug into the details yet. Um, but that's what it sounds like the project would result in. And maybe there are other mechanisms that the city can also explore that I'm just not aware of that would come out of that project too. Um, so that's, you know, the kind of the full basket of the full projects, but then this interim solution would only be one tiny part of what would result from the full project. So this would be just one code amendment. Amending the section of our code, I should have put it up on the screen. It's in section sixteen point one one six, which is our design standards and improvement requirements for land divisions, subdivisions. Um, and it says literally developers are quote encouraged, but not required to provide, uh, land for park, parks in the development. Um, and so obviously we're, we are not legally able to enforce that at all because it's just stating that we'd we'd like them to provide it, but they don't have to. So that's the section of code that we would update. If you want to move forward with this interim solution right now, we would update that section of code to say, um, any subdivision that's at least this number of lots is required to create, I would recommend either a public or private park. Um, and we would need to say, you know, we need to provide some parameter of like, you know, how, how much park space is required based on how large the subdivision is. Um, so we're proposing that it would be something to that effect. Um, but it would just be to that one section of our code. So it would be a really small code amendment. We could start working on that right now. And this is the timeline that it would look like for that, um, task. It would just be a staff task. Don't have to hire anyone. Um, we've already done quite a bit of research and I should say, when I say we, I should say Alan has already done quite a bit of research on this topic since we've had several meetings so far. Um, so we're actually, we're quite prepared to go ahead and draft those amendments because we've got all these examples from other jurisdictions. You know, we've kind of gotten into the weeds on that part. Um, so we're ready to do that and, uh, could do that, you know, this month. And then City Council could review that draft at a briefing next month. I don't know what the agenda schedule looks like. Um, but you know, we could get that in front of you as soon as you're ready to see it. Um, hear from you at that briefing, we would send that around to the Planning Commission and Parks and Rec Commission for their comments as well. Um, you know, get your input. What changes do you want to see? Make those revisions and then, um, put it through for adoption hearings first to the Planning Commission and then to the City Council. Um, assuming there's some, there's always complications with scheduling. Um, I'm being, we're being pretty conservative here, assuming there's gonna be, uh, you know, complications. We would probably have that code going into effect by the September, which is much preferable than, um, you know, the following September or even the one after that with the longer timeline. So let's look at the next slide. All right. This is just once again, a comparison side by side, full project versus interim solution. Let's go to the next slide. So today, did we skip a slide? I thought I had a
This one.
Go back. Back. There we go. Um, so there are three hopes that we have for today's meeting. One, can we get confirmation? And it's okay if the answer is no, if we have to discuss this further and come back to you, that's fine too. But can we get confirmation today if possible? Um, yes or no? Do we want to do this interim solution? Or do we want to hold off on that and, um, just do the whole full project all at once? As I said, we're recommending the interim solution. It sounds like it, um, would address one of the main concerns that you've all talked about. Um, and it would do that quickly without hindering us from still pursuing the full project. Um, so that's the first objective that we've got. The second is identify what are your kind of high level goals and priorities related to parks as the city grows? What are the needs that you see for the community related to parks, open space, recreation space? Um, yeah, what are those things that, that you want to consider and, um, account for, provide for into the future? And then lastly, if we have time for it, um, whenever we do go ahead and kick off the full project, what do you want that public involvement to look like? That's something that we will want to know when we're drafting up that RFP, um, because we want to make sure that we, um, yeah, we've got a consultant that's on the hook for helping us lead those engagement activities. Um, and make sure that we're, we're scoping the project to include everything that you want to be included there. So those are the three things that that I'd like to kind of walk us through today. And I think the following slides will just pull up, yeah, each one of those prompts. So I've got three slides for each of those prompts. So I'm gonna pause here, see if there's any questions about any of that. Um, and if not, I would, I think, just open the floor for you all to discuss the first prompt here. But yeah, any questions?
Uh, what amount of land are they currently required to give up? Like, do we know? So, and when I'm saying that, let me give you a better example here. So when they buy, say, 20 acres, what's their loss on, say, streets, green space, et cetera, already initially upfront outside of this?
That, there is a calculation for that. I don't know what the percentage is, but they're not required to, they're not currently required to give up any amount of green space. So right now it's just space that's required for public improvement. So streets, street sidewalks.
Even in PUDs?
And a PUD is different. So a planned unit development is a certain type of subdivision that we, we have a pathway for those to be, um, approved that's more discretionary than the standard subdivision pathway. Um, it's like a more, it provides flexibility. Most developers use it to achieve smaller lots than they normally would be permitted to have. Um, but in a PUD, the trade-off is that the city gets 20% of the site area has to be, um, dedicated open space, park space. Um, and there's a, there's a calculation in the PUD code. Um, which by the way, that is the only type of land division that currently requires any park, any dedication of park space. Um, but plan unit developments, though, you're not allowed to divide your land as a plan unit development unless it's at least five acres large. So those are only going to be really big developments that are required to dedicate park space. Um, yeah, did I answer the question?
Right. I got a bunch of questions, but how many of the, the larger developments are PUDs that we've gotten out of the last 10? If you had to just wing a number.
Faraday Hills, um, Campanella Estates. Nope. Nope. Um, I think I think that, um, Cascadia Ridge might have been. But I, in my tenure here with the city, it's almost been five years and I've never processed a planned unit development. The only one that's come through while I've been here has been Faraday Hills. So.
What makes, what's the difference between a normal development and a PUD?
The PUD has to, I mean, do you mean like?
Like definitionally, like just as someone who's not super well versed in planning stuff.
Um, yeah, a standard subdivision can be any site, any amount of land. Um, and it just goes through our standard code. That code is supposed to be, um, just clear and objective standards that apply just across the book to any development. Um, the plan unit development is an option for parcels or, you know, sites that are at least five acres. Um, and the developer can ask the council to waive or reduce certain standards like lot size. You know, usually in the low density zone, your lot has to, the lots have to be at least 7,500 square feet. Well, in Faraday Hills, they wanted to go really small because there were topography issues. And in exchange for going really small, they say, you know, we'll give you, we'll give you all these extra things in exchange for letting us get more lots, but that are a lot smaller. And so what the city, in theory, what the city gets in exchange for waiving or reducing those other standards is way more open space, interpretive signage, pathways through the woods. Um, and so the, the risk to the developer with doing the plan unit development is that, um, with those, the council is not required to, um, approve those developments because the code is discretionary. The developer has chosen to take this discretionary pathway towards approval, um, in exchange for having flexibility on some of the standards. Um, whereas with the regular subdivision pathway, state law says if it meets the code, the city has to approve it.
Got it.
Yeah, it's really complicated, but that's it in a nutshell. Um, yeah. Do we want to?
I had some more questions. I just, how many acres of parkland do we currently have and how much do we need?
I don't know how many we currently have.
Twenty.
And I don't know how many we need.
It's twenty.
Twenty acres.
Currently have twenty.
What we currently have?
It's in the, if you just read the parks thing, it says we have currently have 20 acres of, of parkland.
The parks master plan?
Uh, no, just a regular webpage here. It's just in the top of the.
On the city's website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You've got, you've got seven facilities with 20 acres.
Did, did the Parks, uh, and Rec Committee come up with a number for what they would like to have?
Not. We, we, we weren't focused mainly on like a, an exact number. We were gonna leave that up to the planning people. We were more of what we would like to see in the code uh, amendments. It was more just suggestions that way than actual, like, we're not gonna sit that, you know, we weren't gonna sit there and be like, oh, we want 10% of the land to be used as parks. It was more of that's, you know, we're fine with them having discretion to be able to come up with the formulas. We just want to ensure that the parks are actually, we, we encode that we're actually able to build them and our, our, like, our suggestions were, you know, ensure we're able to build them. You know, if we're gonna charge STCs, I would like to see them charged to everybody, whether it's personal built, like personal houses being built, commercial sites being built, trailer parks being built, because every city has different requirements based on, you know, each development, right? So we would just, we want to like ensure everyone's paying their fair share, uh, making sure the SECs are like pegged to some sort of CPI or inflation index. That way it keeps up cost with the rising costs in construction over time. Those types of things were really our recommendations. It wasn't really specifically, we want to see 80 acres by 2030. Those weren't the recommendations we really made.
What I was trying to get to is the need and then reverse engineer from there, rather than just put a percentage. If we have 200 acres, for instance, in the UGB that's residential land and we need 30 acres, that helps us get to the number of the percentage as opposed to 10% of everybody's land that develops. If someone, a, a property owner in Estacada wants to develop their five acre lot, they lose 10 to 15% in roads. Then they have to put 10% to parks. They're down 25% of their land that they own already just because they want to subdivide it. And then when the houses go in, then there's another 6,500 per lot. If you're getting eight lots per acre, you're paying out another $50,000 in SDCs to, and this is just the parks. And then for every acre, they're paying out that much. So I'd rather know what the need is first, rather than just randomly throw a percentage at a requirement so that we know what we're trying to get to, what the goal is. We know how much undeveloped land is in the UGB that's zone residential. And we know what number we're getting to rather than a percentage of every acre that, or every lot that gets developed.
I read that though. I think it's 60 acres is, is to put the size of the city. I think 60 acres is the ultimate goal. A park lands for a town size, 60 acres was the goal. And I believe that's what I read.
I see your hand raised, Steven. I think you can unmute now.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to say, if, if you want to really boil it down to like, what is the need in plain language? It's as we are bringing more regular users of our recreation opportunities into the city, we just need to provide, we need, we need to provide the space and there's recreation opportunities. So I mean, r- rather than just look at it as land, it's, it's really, like when we were looking at it before, it was more about like what kind of, uh, you know, what, what is being built and how many people are going to be showing up and needing to use, you know, needing to have these recreation opportunities. And I, I think it's better to come at it from that angle rather than just like square footage. You know, it's number of people. Number of users coming in.
But we're taking square feet of land from the developers, right? So I think that's the perspective we need to be looking at it as far as the code goes is what we're gonna take from them meets our needs of what our goals are, not, not the use of the land.
Right. But I mean, if, if we're trying to come up with a formula, then, um, you know, it's, it's better to, I, I, I think it's better to come from population rather than just square footage. If, if you have a developer coming in and building, you know, huge houses, you know, and with big lots. And that's fewer users than a developer that's coming in with a, you know, a small, a higher number of smaller units.
And you know, the only thing I'd add to that is, you know, you know, obviously you want to see the, the, the developer's perspective on it, but also it's, uh, you know, as we get more people, we need more land and, you know, they need, they should build developments that work for the city, you know, you know, I don't, I don't see it as the city should be bending backwards for the developers. They should be providing us plans and developments that work for the city.
We gotta be careful not to cross the line of telling somebody what they can and can't build with the land that they already own as well. You need to be respectful of that. I mean, if the ball was in your court and it was your three acre parcel, you wouldn't like the city telling you, you have to give up X amount of percentage of it, if we're to look at this very objectively.
I don't, I think, I think a, a difference would be we would have, this wouldn't be affecting anyone who's already bought and developing. This would be, uh, affecting those, yeah, the, the prospective buyers. So we wouldn't be impeding on anybody that hasn't bought yet. At least that's my understanding here.
The moment that you, if you own land and you decide to divide it to develop it, you own it already. You're gonna give up this land.
Right. So you're talking, we're talking at that point, we're talking private people that would be selling to a developer or private people that would be.
Or they decided to develop. I mean, if you had three acres and you wanted to subdivide it to, to make housing lots, you're gonna have to give up that part of your land.
They're not required to give up the land. They can also pay the SDCs which would provide money for land somewhere else that somebody is willing to give up and make it more of a, an enjoyable park or do whatever.
My understanding, the SDCs get paid anyways.
Right. The SDCs get paid by the, um, at the point of building permit issuance. Um, there is a, so in a planned unit development or if a developer does, um, dedicate, wants to dedicate parkland to the city, they can get SDC credits in exchange for doing that if the land meets our standards for park space. We do have a mechanism for that in the code. We just don't have a mechanism for normal subdivisions to be required to create park space. Um,
Do we have a average size of like these said parks? Like, is there an average?
So there are a lot of small private parks in subdivisions throughout the city that, um, that wouldn't meet the standards for, you know, the city wouldn't want to, probably wouldn't want to take over a small neighborhood.
But your comparison, right? You said you compared it to other communities and stuff to try to gather a what, what's the standard, what's your standard average size?
Of a public park?
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't know, but we can include that in our questions to research.
But I, I would also say, you know, I think, well, as we're researching, you know, houses that are on green spaces or parks are statistically worth more money, you know? So even if you use a portion of that land for parks, you increase the value of the ones on the perimeter of the park. So whether they would actually be losing money in that transaction, I, I think that's up for debate.
Until, until you try to put a public park in it and then you get a bunch of residents coming in that bought that at a higher value complaining that they're gonna have traffic and people coming. And that's exactly what happened just a couple of months ago. Well, yeah. We were trying to put the, the splash pad into Campanella into a green space where they charged more for the properties that were surrounding the green space. And once you put a public park in it, none of those residents, they were very upset that they overpaid for that property. So it's, I don't know that that's a benefit to the, the citizens of, of Estacada.
But I think it's more of a disclosure issue. Like they should have known that it was gonna be public when they were buying. That's something that should have been disclosed to them in the house buying process. Whether they did their due diligence or not, I don't know, but.
I don't know that that would have increased the value of the property then. So I guess it's, it's two different arguments that you're making. If it's gonna be open to the public, you're gonna have a lot of traffic in there. It's not attractive to those properties. It would be a downside to it.
And also a lesson that was a big. And also a lesson, that was a big lesson learned for the city, I think, where we, when Campanella came through their original approval, we conditioned that approval on, well, you have to, yes, we'll let you do this planned unit development, but you have to put in this park. Well, we didn't require them to put in all of the park amenities until after they finished plating. We allowed them to plat all of the phases of that development before putting in the park. So those homes were built around the green space while it was green space and the city and everyone knew, I mean, you know, the developer knew and the city knew that that park was planned to be, you know, filled with park amenities. Um, but the buyers of those homes didn't know that, and, you know, that was, that's terrible for them. That was a mess. That was really upsetting for a lot of people. Um, and the city can in the future make sure to prevent that by requiring the developer to put in park amenities. If you want park amenities there, make sure those go in before plating. And we've got, you know, we have planners on staff now. Um, so we've got process documents for all of this now, so that won't happen again. Um, but yeah, that's the kind of thing that you don't think about those kinda nitty gritty, like pieces of the mechanisms and our codes and internal processes, but they really matter in terms of like what happens to the homeowners that buy these homes.
I would just like to reiterate though, that we're talking about potentially fifteen, ten to fifteen percent loss upfront already for streets and other public entities, right? That's correct?
That sounds right. I don't know. And that's, and that's normal, and it remains profitable for people to develop their properties. And I'll also just note that it's also normal for, um, developments of certain sizes in many other cities to have some park requirements. You know, you could scale them, you could, you could get creative with it if you're worried about kinda punishing smaller landowners, basically.
Okay, I was just looking up, cause I couldn't remember the numbers and it's slightly, it's gonna be difficult to explain this verbally, but if you look in the Parks Master Plan, um, on page nineteen, it has existing and future parkland level of service, and this was what was adopted in two thousand eighteen. Um, and so it talks about, it's got a little chart there, says community parks. We had existing total acres was eighteen acres. And then the adopted level of service standard was supposed to be four to five acres per thousand people for community parks. Um, for neighborhood parks, we had point six acres at the time, and the adopted level of service was two and a half to three and a half acres per thousand population. So, and it says undeveloped parks and future neighborhood parks, but then in the paragraph above that where it's kind of explaining it, it says, using the current methodology, city would need approximately two to three new neighborhood parks by twenty thirty-five or eight to fourteen additional acres to meet a future population of fifty-seven hundred, which is where we didn't take till twenty thirty-five to get there. So there, at that, we could figure out probably the, the amount of acres, but they're saying for our community parks, you should have four to five acres per thousand. Um, and for neighborhood parks, two and a half to three and a half acres per thousand. So if there's gonna be a a subdivision that's gonna have fifty houses, and there's two and a half people that live in each house, you kind of figure out how many people and how much space that might, I mean, maybe that's kind of the calculation.
We take the higher number. I'm all, I love parks and I think it's great. All I'm trying to avoid doing is if we need a hundred acres, whatever the number is, we need a hundred acres. I don't wanna end up with two hundred and fifty acres of it. Because ultimately, everyone says it's the developer, the developer, the developer. The developer's not eating that cost. The cost of the houses, when they sell them, are gonna be more expensive. The first time homebuyers are paying that expense. It's not the developer's not gonna make ten percent less money on, on the property when they develop it. They're gonna pass that ten percent on to the person they sell the house to. So that's who's ultimately paying for it. Then that same person is gonna pay the sixty-five hundred dollar SDC fee when, for parks when they do it. And then they're gonna pay the state five hundred dollars a month taxes to rent their property back from them. And so the, the thought process of this evil developer is, needs to pay their fair share and do their contributions. I don't like that concept. Ultimately, it's the homebuyer that's gonna be paying the expense of it, and they're gonna, they're gonna continue to pay. They're gonna pay when they buy the house. They're gonna pay when the SDC fees for the permit fees, and then they're gonna pay to rent their property back from the government every month. Our taxes are about five hundred dollars a month on my house, and we have a third of an acre. And we'll pay that forever and it's gonna continue to go up. We'll never actually own that property. So I, I, I look at it through that lens. And I, and I love park space and I wanna figure out the right number and the right percentage. And all I'm trying to do is I'm not trying to avoid getting the percentage. I just wanna get the percentage right so that we meet our needs. Whatever that is, whatever the number is, I wanna make sure we have a good calculation for that.
I wanted to echo that a, a little bit too, like, I, I don't think it's, when we've been having these discussions on the park side, it's not, uh, we're, it's not so black and white. It's not like we're, we're thinking these developers are awful. I think it's really about trying to meet in the middle and anyone who's doing a development like this, you, you have to provide some infrastructure for the people that are gonna be there. And if you just try to cram as many houses in and you don't give, and, and we don't, you know, if you have a developer that doesn't give the attention to infrastructure and parks and recreation opportunities that should be there, then they're kind of, you know, they're, they're taking something away from the very place that they're trying to sell. And so I, I, I think it's really about trying to find a, a, like a compromise and a middle ground between these, like, between the SDCs, SDCs this formula we come up with. It's not about punishing the developer. The developers are gonna make e- e- enough money, but we also don't want to like bog them down so much that, you know, that, that these things do become really expensive. So, I, I think really that's, that's the, the goal here is not to screw anyone over. It's, it's to find the best outcome for all parties involved.
So, given the numbers that Melanie had read off to us from the old master plan, is that something that you can back into? If we, if we are all in agreement on that phase one approach, and we've got a numerical formula that we can point to, not just some, some number that we're grasping for, is that something that you can back into?
Yeah, so we could, if I'm understanding correctly, um, basically take the, you know, the target percentage that's in our existing plan, look at, um, kinda what's the difference between where we're at and where we're supposed to be, um, and propose that percentage, um, that target percentage for, um, you know, the percentage that we're using, or that we're requiring a developer to, um, dedicate or to turn into park space. We could do that or, you know, and if you, if you wanted to be a little more lenient than that, we could go a little more lenient, but still have a percentage that's roughly in that ballpark. Um, or if you wanted to go a little higher, I don't know, but we'll have to punch some numbers to figure out exactly what that percentage is. Um, but that would be part of the, um, our first step of drafting those code amendments is going in and actually running those numbers and figuring out what the percentage requirement would be.
No, that's great. Yeah, I just, I would, the number I'd be looking for is the average number of residents per household in Estacada, cause that would, that would complete the equation for it. Cause if it's on the high side, five acres per thousand residents, you divide the thousand by the average number of residents per household in Estacada, that's gonna give you the number per acre that you need. I mean, the average size, uh, max density in, in a, in a lot, you'd be able to get to the number real easily, the percentage that we need for park space. And it'd be a real simple, clean equation that could be applied equally to everyone, you know, so whether it's a small development or a large development, it would calculate out well.
Right. However, on the very last point there, there are developments that we suspect would be too small for this calculation to make sense. So I'm just pulling this number out of a hat, but let's say the requirement is they need to create, um, you know, they need to provide ten percent of the total site area needs to be turned into a park space. Um, if you've got a really small site and they're only doing like a ten or fifteen lot subdivision, that's probably not gonna, you're gonna have a really, really tiny park, right? So the other question that we'll have for you, doesn't have to be answered today, but if we do this interim solution, when we come back to you for a briefing to look at the original draft amendments, we'll be proposing, um, a sort of threshold, I imagine, where it's like, you know, either, I think the city of Portland uses forty lots. If the subdivision is forty lots or larger, they must create park space in the development. We could look at doing thirty, we could look at doing fifty, right? But that's another question to consider there.
Any more questions over here?
You go ahead first. I was just doing math in my head.
Problem I have with some of this is that, you know, we're, we're looking at projects right now coming in with just massive density happening there, you know, where you're, you're got a really small lot and you're packing people in. And, you know, uh, I don't know, you know, it's, those funds have to come from somewhere. Now, either you build a pool of funds, which is the SDCs technically do. You build a pool of funds and let the developers do that, and you look for other solutions. And there are other solutions out there right now. Uh, our, uh, our lawyer for the city here was talking one day and I was listening to his conversation. He said, you know, we can look outside the urban growth boundary for properties that possibly connect to some of these for parkland, because urban growth boundary, that's the most expensive property there is around here. Can we buy more and do more with it? You know, and I, I looked at that and I said, okay, what else? So how do we put that in there, you know? And the other issue I thought was stratification of, uh, SDC fees and stuff, you know? I'm, I'm not sure I'm understanding how apartments are, are taxed against SDCs. You know, you, in the code, it looks like, you know, you're just one apartment building and you charge them sixty-five hundred bucks for that apartment building. I know that can't be right.
No, it's per unit.
I know that can't be right. I'd go, you're putting, you know, any people in, in one little area and, and, you know.
It's per, it's per unit.
Is it, is it per unit? Well, that's even better. I like that. That makes me feel better. But, you know, coming forward though, we're gonna have to look at, uh, I know we're, we're thinking about the Economic Development Committee coming up hopefully sometime soon and, and, uh, industrial, if we're trying to woo in the industrial or commercial builders and what stuff like that, you know, they pay significantly higher SDCs, especially for parkland, stuff like that. That's welcoming in kind of thing, you know, and you know, right now, if you had somebody like Fred Mars pulling in here today, you know, he can just do whatever he wants to do. And, you know, if, we're gonna have to get that kind of money, cause you're just gonna need those kind of funds to keep this thing funded long enough to make it worthwhile, you know? They pay infinitely. I know one in the city aggression, uh, their planners used to tell me, uh, your typical business pays anywhere from ten to twenty percent more than an average home builder does in property taxes. You know, and those funds are needed, you know, school districts, parks and rec, you know, just the livability of the area. We've gotta pull those funds in somehow, you know, you know, those new ball fields. Yeah, it's just the reality of it, you know?
Oh, yeah, these are good, really good considerations. Um, yeah, did you?
I was just gonna speak to that, um, the number of houses, housing units that you might wanna consider, like, would it be forty? Would it be thirty? Would it be fifty? And if we did, um, if I did my math right, um, if we averaged it three acres per thousand people for neighborhood parks, not the community wide park, but a neighborhood park. And then if we average three people in a house, which might be high, it might be two point five or two point eight, something like that. Uh, but if we rounded it to three, if we did fifty houses, there'd be a hundred and fifty people there. And at three acres per thousand, it comes out to point four or five acres. That would be, you know, for a, for a unit or for a development of fifty houses. Um, what'd be recommended would be point four or five acres of open space. So, so you might not wanna get, you know, it's just under half an acre. You might not wanna go smaller than that, or you might, you know, might wanna, it's.
Ten thousand square feet doesn't sound right.
It seems like it would be, yeah, so maybe I did the math wrong, but we could.
Point four or five acres is like twenty, twenty-one thousand, um, twenty-one thousand square feet.
So it'd be like three housing lots.
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty, I think, for, for an acre.
So it's not very, not very large even, you know, estimating that in, into a house, uh, unit of, or a subdivision of fifty houses, but to come up with, um, sometimes they do like thirty houses here and then, oh, phase two, thirty more houses and, um.
Current Creek Four is coming up and they're twenty-five houses of development. Right, they're twenty-seven to twenty-five. And they're, this is development number four of the same, the same plan. That way they can avoid issues like this. Yeah.
So you have a lot on your plates to think about.
When I think up and up a coming, uh, council meetings, we're gonna be talking about SDCs also, aren't we? In the near future, so that's something that'll come to the table and we'll all need to discuss, which will help immensely. I mean, you gotta look at where we're at in the SDC list right now. We're one of the lowest cities on the list. So, um, I, I, I don't mean to put it this, but it's like the Walmart of land right out here right now, and, uh, we need to get real. And our SDCs, we do. I mean, that's why we have so many developers out here with big giant teams coming in here and giving us plans. Um, because they're spending very little when it comes down to it, as far as SDC, and they know that, and they know that. So I hope we'll look at this when it comes through. But other than that, I think, uh, you put a really good plan tonight, and I think, um, figuring out that fine tuning of the amount, thirty, forty, fifty, uh, is something we can do going forward. So.
I just have one comment on, uh, on one of your earlier slides, when you were differentiating between like public and private, uh, parkland. The only thing I would be wary of is, you know, is like how small really is a private park? And if the private park, if you have access to it from a public road, you know, could, could someone walk on into a private, a private park, you know, someone's just walking in the city, you know, you take a natural conclusion, you know, you have people like calling cops on like other people in the city, cause it's a private park. I would just be like wary of how much, like, whether, how, how big a versus a private is versus a public, and whether or not you actually have access to a private park through public means.
We're calling it a community park.
Yeah.
Cause that's the other.
How much land does the city purchase with the SDC fund for parks?
I don't know.
We have, I would say, it's been a while, because we purchased the, um, Wade Creek Park property. And so other than that, I think everything else has come in through developments. The Casadero Heights Park, that was a long time ago, the Reagan Heights, that one came in through the development, and the Reagan Hill one. Yeah, well, just a little playground. And then the, um, Cascadia Ridge Park, that came in with the Cascadia Ridge Development. Um, so I think really the, the property that we have purchased would have been Wade Creek Phase One, uh, Phase Two, where the skate park is, and then, um, Phase Three, I can't remember if we purchased that or if that was completely donated. I think it was part purchase and part, uh, donation before the library, whoops, before the library was built. So that's really where we've put purchase of property, but.
How long have you been with the city?
Fifteen years.
So in the fifteen years, you can think of those two properties that we paid for?
Yeah, and the, the Wade Creek Park was paid for before I got here, actually. Yeah, early in the two thousands.
My beginning years.
It was a long, long-term community vision.
How much money do we have, like, in our SDC fund that we have right now for the city?
I don't know off the top of my head right now. I'm about to do a, um, a financial update to the city council though, and so I will know what that current amount is. I can look at what it was a couple of months ago.
And the funds for that, uh, for those SDCs, are they sitting in like a, a high yield, like interest like account, where we're like making money on it, or is it just, is it pretty stagnant over time?
Um, it's not a high yield account, but it's the state pool, and I think it's, I wanna say it's like four percent right now. Maybe it's not that high. I can't remember, but we're getting quite a bit of interest.
But it doesn't keep pace with like inflation or anything like that. Yeah.
No, no, we haven't, we haven't really.
Depends on who's in office.
Not really. I mean, you look at it since the eighties, everything goes, goes up, you know, they're charging half a million dollars a home in Campanella, and it's, you know, how much are they paying for that land?
Are there any other considerations or questions that you are all having in deciding whether to move forward with this interim solution option?
Everybody good with the interim?
Depending on the numbers, I like the idea.
Richard, you good?
Yeah, definitely. I think, I mean, this, the sooner we can get something in just so that, you know, we don't have anyone sneaking and past it, the better.
Richard?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing, I think I'm seeing, I just want to confirm thumbs up from the city councillors in the room or no thumb or thumbs down. We have a sideways. Four thumbs up, two sideways thumbs. And I heard a thumbs up from Jerry. Okay, all right. And yeah, just a reminder. So we'll, we will put together a draft and bring it before you in a briefing. Um, and at that point in time, if for whatever reason you decide, we don't want to move forward with this, or we want it to be drastically different. Obviously, that's your prerogative and we'll take your direction. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I've got a half a page here, but I'll start off with, um, you took my sock, you took my seat on the council when I left after twelve years. Tom's been here longer, both of us dang near put together. He's old. And he's about the same age I am. He just started sooner. You asked very good questions. You discussed very good. Let me put my two cents of glasses on and see if I can read what I wrote. And a lot of this, you guys hit right there, square right in the nose. You know, it was, what is our plan? Well, you're talking, you want five acres, ten acres, eighteen acres of ground. Okay, the interim solutions, that was a great, uh, what passes for parks proposing? What did I write? Something, oh. Oh, proposing now for new projects, eighteen months to study the, this. We did that in early ninety-six, I think. And, uh, there was a Parks Master Plan that was put together, took us a couple of years. We knew that planned or that development was going to happen. We tried our best to stay on top of it, Parks Master Plan, Street Master Plan, Master Plans for all Master Plans. We had RDI. World Development Initiatives that came out here, took a cross-section of, of the community and gave them all a bunch of stickers of what would you like to see on all of these little, uh, sandwich boards? What's most important to you on each one of these? And it was a good idea. It seemed to me off, but I says, okay, better than a paintball gun. Um, they asked, what do you want to see? They wanted better streets. We had potholes everywhere, not like today. Well, almost. Um, then it moved down to how much park SDCs are in our coffers? That was a great question. We don't know the answer. You got a budget committee meeting coming up pretty soon, right?
That's right.
Thank God I'm not on it anymore. Uh, we had it for twenty years. Um, basically, the new housing has been paying for, and I've asked questions of our, our engineers and these gentlemen and ladies. Uh, I know that that thirty-six units paid a good, healthy chunk for water sewer. And I guess now it park SDCs on each unit. That's great. I mean, like you said, it's going to jack the rent up and I see two new people uh, or two new families moving in it today. And let's see, I was going to ask what have we taken in for SDCs for the last eight years of this high-rise type, uh, development? And what's still in our coffers? It was a big matter of that. And I have a question here. I think you already answered it. What happened to our Sisty, our city park master plan from years ago? We didn't meet or exceed it. Did it just die for a lack of enthusiasm or? You know, I'm talking from the, from the ninety, what, ninety-six forward? We had, we had one of these things in, in order. Now, at that time, Tom and I watched from Darryl Road over to Reagan Hill Road. That development was twenty and a half acres. He built nine point nine eight acres on one and come back with the other nine point eight nine acres. But he took out the roads out of that equation for, for an acre and a half.
I think you're talking about going from wagon to electric car and, uh, those plans had to change.
Yeah, well, we.
We updated a lot of them.
We, we, numbers are my specialty. And we said, you bought a twenty-one acre parcel. You developed half of it. Now you're developing the other half. You know dang well, you owe the city a half an acre at that time. And he did provide a pocket park up there. And, uh, a lot of us on the planning commission and this council helped him build it. Anyway, as far as I know, that was the only one. What designates for green space and or what designate for a utilized, um, usable park space, not swamp land at hillside?
Yeah, so the, the code for, um, the current code that we have, which we can only really enforce for planned unit developments right now. But we do have code that lays out what type of land will the city accept as parkland that gets dedicated to the city. So obviously, the city doesn't want to take over land that is, um, difficult or, you know, has, I don't know, has crazy topography, et cetera. Land that has problems with it, with land that has a wetland, right? The city only wants to take over and should only be responsible for taking over land that is, um, you know, high quality parkland. If the city is going to take over park space. And so those standards are what tells us, um, you know, if your, if the developers land that they're offering as, you know, the requirement for that planned unit development, or we can use, we can use that code section for um, park that's being, um, offered outside of a planned unit development. You know, if just a regular subdivision wants to offer park space for dedication, they can do that. We just can't require them to, um, and they can do that in exchange for SDC credits, um, just like the planned unit developers can. But yes, we have that defined in our code, what, what counts for park space that the city is willing to take over. We don't, however, to my knowledge, well, we should, uh, I can't remember if we reviewed the definitions. Do we define clearly what counts as park space versus open space versus green space? And if we don't, then, then, you know, the norm is to just go by what the dictionary or like the industry standard is. So it's not really that concerning that we don't have, if we don't have those defined in our definitions section. Um, but that's absolutely something that we could go in and if we want to make sure to define what counts as a park, what counts as a green space, what counts as an open space, whatever. That's something that, um, we would review and include in that full project option.
Uh, this is just for clarification. So in the essence of trying to get caught up, right, on say what we're short in, are, are we looking at options now that it's been put on the table about this SDC money also to like, could we expand upon? So like, I, I think a Wade Creek, right? There's an empty green lot behind Wade Creek that I know that, uh, owner of the shell or whatever that gas station is there has communicated before that he was in favor of helping us with like the splash pad back then. Could we look to purchase, say, additional land that's already like at bordering one of our parks to say, expand a current park to do something a little bit more immediate to address the issue rather than? Am I making sense?
I, I don't want to, I know, Richard, I don't know if you're through with your notes, but I have a few things, uh, we, you could definitely do that. That's kind of the question we're asking.
Jonathan just hit my next line. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad there's like-minded people here. It's, they don't have to all think alike, but they, they have their heads on the right. Have it. What is an acre of parkland, actual parkland worth? And what's it going to cost us to wait?
Well, that was, I kind of answered that to, to, for you. I said, you know, you, anything in the urban growth boundary is a lot more valuable than anything outside the urban growth boundary.
Okay.
Because you can build on property inside the urban growth boundary or outside, there, there are very specific zoning rules that are. So that property would be cheaper.
Okay, but how do people access that? And my next line was, if we have usable park space, is anybody aware that a lot of them don't have parking to access it? Excuse me, to access them? You know, Wade Creek, the bathroom, the library, they all have parking. It's wonderful. I don't know of another one yet. You see where I'm going with this? You, you go after the park, but there's a whole issue that surrounds that, that tunnel vision. Oops, we forgot this. And so this is why I look like a drone or a bird's eye view, you know? Park space is something that people use, not just birds and squirrels and other rodents.
I think we, a lot of development, Mike, had addressed a lot of the parking issues that we had had questions about back when we were deciding how much parking to get. We're trying to encompass the parking into this play, but as we grow, obviously parking is going to be harder and harder to find.
That's right.
So, you know, and, and that's just.
You know, the way. The cost of doing a park with proper planning. I'm going to repeat something that Brad Day told me before he died many times. Proper planning prevents piss poor performance.
Yep.
And so, you know, you've got several commissioners that have specialties that overlap and it's beautiful. And so it's not just one, one person calling the set of ideas. Let's see if I can get through this and we'll be done. Um, you already answered that one. If our Ryan Carpenter was here, he wants to know if there's any way to throw in some more football fields or baseball fields or whatever, wherever. Currently, there's only one property and Mr. Locke just bought it as I understand this week. Or I, I learned about it this week. And so, kudos, kudos. You got geese, you got bark, you got any number of ideas that you'll take care of and it's yours and to deal with. And so I think that's wonderful. Cause that poses our, uh, you know, ballparks and other recreational possibilities and opportunities. And so that was my last question.
All right, Melanie, you'll go next.
Okay, and I just wanted to answer some of, there's been a lot of questions coming up, so I'm going to try to catch them all real quick without taking too much time. But thank you for describing the process of a parked master plan, because you remember the one from back in the day. And then we did the, a new parks master plan in twenty eighteen and went through very much that same process. Um, and fifteen years ago, when I started here, we had plenty of money in the parks SDC to build parks. But when you build a park, then you have to maintain a park and we didn't have funding to maintain those parks. And so it was like, why would we build a park or accept a park from a developer, um, if we don't have the funding to maintain it? But thankfully now, we do, um, we do have funds to maintain the parks. And so we're able, you've seen a huge expansion of parks over the past, especially ten, twelve years, yes.
What was the, the number? You were looking for the number from a couple of months ago for what's in the SDC fund on the park?
It is right now. So this is, this is at the end of, um, quarter two, at the end of December. The ending fund balance was six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We had brought in, um, our revenue was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and twelve thousand of interest. So, uh, not, nothing to shake your head at for interest. We had started out with three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and we had spent, uh, we built that Wade Creek Park Phase Three over the past couple of years and that really drained us down on the, on our park SDC fund. So that's why we're kind of rebuilding. Um, but that's what's in there now. There is a hundred and thirty thousand of that that is earmarked for the school ballfields. Um, when the, when they do develop those, right now, there's no, they need to put in parking. That needs to be a paved parking lot. Um, they need to put in a concession stand and that hundred and thirty thousand is to go towards the concession stand and restrooms that they want to build in there. Um, and the city had agreed to pay a hundred and thirty thousand towards that and then whatever it is above it. Um, the school district will take care of that. But so those fields back there behind High School and River Mill are sitting there. I think they're being used for youth soccer, youth football, um, some baseball, uh, but they do need, um, uh, some more development. So a hundred and thirty thousand of the SDCs are reserved for that. We're also going to be using some of the SDCs to put in the splash pad. Um, so it's not all like totally available, but yes.
What's the annual maintenance cost for the, for the parks currently on, on the books?
Um, that I do not know because it would be. I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head. I know we contribute ten thousand dollars to the school district for maintaining those ballfield areas. But as far as our, we have two parks employees and then we have the equipment and the whatever chemicals or whatever they use, um, as they're, um, you know, taking care of the parks and the wood chips for the playgrounds and so I, but I could look that up.
Just seems like that, that's going to drastically change pretty quickly. The, the SDC funds for the parks is, is getting ready to get ramped up and, and looking for opportunities where we can invest in, in neighborhood, in public parks that are open to the entire community. I mean, how many houses do we have on the books that are approved lots? There are subdivisions? It's over fourteen hundred or something?
There are a lot of approved lots, probably about fourteen hundred. But the build, the building permit issuance doesn't, doesn't, you know, the trend that we're seeing is not all of those lots being built in the next four years even.
Gotcha. Well, when they do, it's going to bring in approximately nine point one million dollars into the Parks SDC fund.
Yeah, and more like over the next, I don't know, eight or ten years, right?
They got to be built within.
They don't have to be built, they have to be platted.
Platted, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, platted. So the road's got to be in.
We don't just bleed the fund, so what's a reserve that we would hold in the fund?
Um, we actually budget to spend the fall, all of our SDCs every year. Um, we don't have to keep a, a minimum balance in our SDC fund, but we do, um, we do spend those carefully. So here's the question for you though. Do you like the idea of expanding community parks, which is Wade Creek Park? It's going to be the Lake Shore Development, Lake Shore Trail, where like you drive to that, you park or people come in from outside the communities. And that's kind of what our SDCs will build up and go towards along with other grants. But we're talking about here, if we're talking about, um, residential development, do you like the idea of having small parks in neighborhoods where you don't necessarily need parking? Because people walk from their homes to go to the parks and you don't have to get in your car and drive to the community park. You can go to just a small, not as grand of a scale park, but it's someplace in your neighborhood that you can walk to. And do you think that Estacada people and value that? Or do we value more the, um, community parks where it's put into, like, in an area that everybody goes? What do you, how, questions about those? Cause I think that's a big issue, yeah.
I think it's really both, um, because we, we have, we kind of have two things going on here, which, you know, we, we've been here for a while before all of these. The, the population was pretty stable for like years and then it seems like it's just exploded recently. And there's so many people that live here that, you know, where we're agricultural zoned or we're, we're spread out a little bit more. And we rely on the community parks. And then all the things that are going in right now, it seems to make sense to have things that are, um, you know, like active transportation and, uh, accessible transportation are going to matter more in these denser areas that are coming in that are so unlike the rest of the city and the area. And smaller parks are going to make sense there too, because a, a, as you just go in, you know, you want kids to be able to like safely bike to each other's houses and you, you, you're going to need that kind of, you, you want to, you want to plan for people not having to drive everywhere in these denser areas versus the, the, the sort of like legacy Estacada, which is, you know, we're kind of used to, we kind of have to do it anyway, because we all live, uh, so spread out. So, so both.
To get back to it though, we were, we're discussing at the beginning, I think it was addressed that. To get back to it though, we were, we're discussing at the beginning, I think it was addressed that we're short now, right? So an immediate fix would be expanding upon something that we already have. If we could, it would centralize maintenance costs to an area that we're already maintaining essentially, right? So it's not like sending somebody to an additional spot to mow or this or that. It's like putting it all in one spot. You would have parking options, things like that. But I do see a need. Like whoever was just speaking was talking about for maybe looking at a mixed use thing for whatever to meet our goal would be going forward in smaller, in smaller sizes in new communities. But I would absolutely to kill two birds with one stone. And I think we definitely should be looking at expanding upon what we have growing. What would two, say two acres do to the Wade Park, Wade Creek thing? You could open that up. You could add more, you could people come laugh. I mean, I take my daughters there, for example, and they see kids from their school and there's things like that and they get excited to show their, you know, dad, their friends or whatnot, whereas they might not get that in Little Park, but it also keeps it out of the neighborhoods to keep it more reclusive and more private in your neighborhoods, less car traffic, things like that. Those things come to my mind too is still giving you a level of intimacy and privacy in your community. I do see a need for littler parks. But I could tell you, living near Campanella where it's like the park for the area, you get a lot of tourist traffic as these new transient people do come into town. It seems to be where they like to stop and hang out. So it draws different elements into the neighborhoods and I'd rather address that at a bigger, more central area personally.
Oh, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things real fast. Uh, how much did Wade Creek actually cost the city? Like if the park is a whole?
With all three phases? Ooh, I'd have to look at that. The final phase with the, the culvert, um, it, there was like multiple, multiple phases, the culvert and the road, the restoration of the creek, the park, the building, that was all total about three point eight million. And then there was, but I don't remember how much the rest, the, the first two phases cost.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I mean, you know, six hundred thousand sounds like a lot, but really construct, you know, even if we had the ten million dollars coming in, you know, if someone worked in Kentucky, that, that money doesn't go very far, you know, so, you know, even if we had like ten million dollars that you're thinking three parks, maybe like fully at full amenities, that type of thing, you know? And the other point I wanted to touch on, you know, the, like Campina, I jogged through Campina constantly. I, I never see people in, in the park, like I, 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 I talked to people that mostly just the people like going there for the small slides and stuff like that. But I, but the point like we were making was, you know, when you have an open lot that has nothing on it, it attracts like those types of people, right? But when you fill out those with like park amenities, you attract more families. Those spaces usually keep those kinds of people out because it's normally just your neighbors are constantly there. You know, it's the same reason why like neighborhood watch works, cause you are always looking out for your neighbors and stuff like that. So if you bring more of your neighbors into the park, you likely could keep it safer just through the sheer mass of the amount of people you already know are in that park type of thing.
Yeah. So, so folks don't, don't like happy families.
Yeah. So when you have like a bit more amenities, you know, you're bringing like families.
Folks don't like happy families.
You know, that, you know, when you give people the ability to come to the park and go to it and like relaxing and that type of thing, you know, those are the people you'll get in the park. If you leave it bare and like hidden away, uh, it attracts more of like the people you don't want there, right? So I think it's a matter of just like ensuring the people in the parks are people who are in the city, people like, you know, attracting those people to the parks and giving them the, the ability to say, I want to go to Campanella because I can let my kid do whatever. And while I'm there, maybe I'll pick up a piece of trash. Maybe I'll keep it clean. I'll keep an eye on things. If I see something wrong. You know, I, I'll report it to the city. They'll clean it up. It's more of like you, the more eyes you keep on something and like the more people talking about it, the better it'll be type thing too.
I see Jerry's hand raised online.
Um, I just wanted to, I did a little bit of research into Richard's, uh, final question there that, uh, Ryan would like to see some more ballfields. Um, I'm sorry, guys, I'm in a little bit of a pain. I'm in a little bit of pain. That's why I'm not there tonight, but I'm gonna try to get through this the best I can. Um, the average footprint of a football field is sixty thousand square feet, which is one point three eight acres. Um, the average footprint of a twelve and under baseball field is also sixty thousand square feet, but it's shaped drastically different. Um, for thirteen and up, the average footprint of a baseball field is ninety thousand square feet. So I just want, when, when we start, if, if we start getting in, into discussion of adding ballfields around the city, just take those numbers into consideration because that's, you know, between one point four and two acres of, of, of land that we would have to, you know, we would have to ask for just to put, um, ballfields in that would, you know, and, and they couldn't even, most of them couldn't even be multi-purpose ballfields. I mean, we could do football and soccer on a, on a field, but you really wouldn't be able to put a, a baseball field on that same, on that same square footage. Even a twelve and under baseball field, just because the dimensions of that field, um, even though it works out to the same square footage, it's shaped drastically differently. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. You know, while before it got, we got too far away from that question.
What unused land do we have? Do, do we know that?
Well, there's plenty of undeveloped land that the city doesn't own. But if we're talking about, I think what we're talking about maybe doing would be the city using its SDC funds to purchase land that would be used for sports fields.
Do we currently have, like I understand, like with Campina?
A large enough.
Yeah. Do we currently have other, like we got the Wade Creek and that's, it's beautiful. You guys did a great job on that, but do we have other things that we can look at doing quarter acre, half acre increment increases on as it is adding more structured? That's what I'm saying, cause there are things we could do to scale this.
More immediate. Pocket parks is what you're talking about?
Uh, I mean, if, if the land is there to, to expand it, yes, but what do we?
And I just want to clarify, we, we, we are focusing on phase one here still. Have we bled into phase two?
I hope we're not still focusing on phase one. I feel like I got a, a pretty clear answer from the counselors in the room that enough counselors are thumbs up and the only non-thumbs up were, were maybes. So we are gonna move forward with some draft amendments for phase one.
And then the, the phase two wouldn't be how we're gonna accomplish it, but what would we like to see? And then we could kind of work through all that.
Yes.
How we're gonna accomplish it once we get into that year and a half long process.
Right. Yeah. And so what, what we are, um, I think, I think the way that we start going about that is, um, as I was describing, that project is gonna require consultant assistance. And so hiring the consultant involves putting out a request for proposals. And, um, you really want that RFP to to, to get it right in terms of what, what are the objectives of this project? What are you doing for us? Um, and what are the components of the project? What are the tasks that are gonna be involved? So that when you A, so that you get really good proposals that do exactly what you want them to do. And then B, you draft up your contract based on that proposal and it includes everything that you want them to do. So, so, um, to that end, we're hoping to get, and we've already gotten a lot of this from, from you in this conversation, but um, if we can kind of get your input on what are your main goals and priorities for this project? When I ask that question, I kind of mean at a high level. What do you, you know, when you envision the city in ten years and you're thinking about the amenities that exist in the community for kids and families, people wanting to exercise in outdoor spaces, et cetera. Um, what are some of the things you want or you believe the community wants, um, in that picture? And yeah, we can talk, we can get, you know, we're happy to get a little more specific and hear some specifics today too, but, um, that's what's gonna help us guide the consultants um, that we're eventually gonna hire.
No, I can start off with this. I'm, you know, I'm all about the ballfields. I think we need a huge one lit up, bright and beautiful. Uh, you've got enough kids here. You've got enough sports going on. You've got a lot of school stuff. It's overflowing. So there's obviously a need for that. So my high in the sky, um, pick would be the sports fields as being something primary here. We've got to think before all that land is used up, where that's gonna go and how we're gonna get there. So I would say that's my, my high point.
Um, sports complex and, and community parks. I, I have two teenage kids and they don't. We have parks up in Cascadia Ridge and I can't remember a time that they've gone to that, but my son goes down to Wade Creek Park and, uh, to the school fields on a daily basis. If it's sunny out, he's at Skate Park or he's at Wade Creek hanging out and I'd like to see more community parks. Um, large community parks. And I don't think you're gonna get that through uh, developers so much as getting the type of space we need. It's gonna come through the SDC fund side of things to get eight, eight acres or ten acres for a clover uh, sports complex set up with four fields on it. You're not gonna get a big enough development to be able to take that as a percentage of the overall development to acquire it. I think that it's gonna, we're gonna have to use that opportunity when those funds start coming in from the SDCs to be able to, uh, at least subsidize that, the, the expense of it. So, but yeah.
The one thing you might want to consider too, as this goes on, you might want to think about, you know, your placement and how it's consolidating the city in certain areas, you, and how you draw people. You know, Wade Creek does a great job of getting one of those people from Campina and probably Faraday and some of those other projects as they build out. But how about what's happening east, north, south of us, you know, and kind of that four point type of approach, you know, where you're, you're drawing people to an area, you know, and keeping them spread out, you know, a little bit. Uh, every one of them offers something a little bit different, you know? You could add for the city itself, you want to think about how they're going to maintain it. And if you had, you know, four main sites across the city, fairly easy to maintain. But all these little pocket things all over the place, you know, become problematic because they're not gonna get uh, it's a very little bit of attention, you know? And if, if you look at it like that, you know, anything within the urban growth, kind of get back to my, my first thought about this, anything within the urban growth boundary is expensive property. And we're not buying any of that. I mean, not out of SDCs anyway, you know? But there's a lot of things on the, you know, anything on the opposite side of Deuce Road or the opposite side of Lawrence Road on the other side, fairly flat property out there. I don't know if it's any of it's for sale, but you know, you, those would encompass, you know, like anything about Farid or Lawrence Road would be you know, everybody that's in the Faraday or Faraday, those projects over there close to them, you know? So that kids can go up in there and do that or anything on the opposite side of Deuce Road there. Um, you know, fairly close to that group of people too, you know? And so the cities consolidate themselves across, you know, in a four point plan, you know, where we can just go here, 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 here. Four really nice parks, ten acres, ball field over on Deuce Road, football field up on Lawrence Road, something like that, you know? Uh, which would be, you know, fairly nice. You know, you can take and have a picnic with your family, you know? That, that way, go ahead.
I heard you talk about mixed use, uh, parks or trails or whatever. Does that include pooches with, uh, little dispensers for plastic bags? Do we have any of them at all? Or do they all have to go to MacGyver Park?
No, we have one here. We've got one at Cascadia Ridge. We got them at Wade Creek Park. We got them at, um, Campina Park. Yeah, they're around.
I mean, before too long, we'll have a pet cafe.
A what?
A pet cafe, it was down in Florida and Palm Springs. They specialize in.
Never been there.
Is that where I take my kids?
So I, I would agree with the sports complexes, the, the bigger community parks too. Those, those would be priority. I would, uh, maybe a sub priority or something that I think would be nice to have. Back to the transportation system plan, the, the safe routes to school, uh, walkability bikes, something along those ways that could connect the different neighborhoods to the school. If we have something like that, then we have a whole city that's connected from a walkability standpoint too.
Yeah, thank you. Um, councillor Ten Bush, see your hands up? And then also Stephen after.
Um, Paul just kind of hit my response on the head. Uh, connectivity was, it was a big one for me. I know Parks and Rec had started, uh, um, you know, started a connectivity plan back when, uh, Brent was on or Brent was the chair. I don't, um, I don't know where that's gone since then, cause I haven't been liaison for a while, but, um, connectivity, you know, through all the neighborhoods into, into town, to the schools, to, to the downtown, uh, biking paths, walking paths, you know, what mixed use paths, whatever they end up being, but connectivity is a big one.
Yeah. And I think just at a very high level, I think really it's about envisioning like what do we want our city to be like? What do we want it to look like? Like, like how do, how do we want our days to look like? We're all living here and it's growing and there's ten thousand people here. And, you know, I, I grew up in a small town where it, you know, a lot of kids would get bored and get into, you know, if you don't, if there aren't ample recreation opportunities, then kids find things to do that are not healthy and not social, uh, like basically the kind of behaviors that we really don't want to have. Uh, you know, see, see in the next generation. And also it's not just about, about the kids. It's really about giving everybody something to do. And I, I think having, uh, like quality and, uh, variety in our recreation opportunities really helps to address that and to just create a better community. Um, and so I think some ways to get that are, you know, having, uh, the, definitely sports fields, like I, I, that I'm super into that, that, um, that's a big one, cause it's also very visible and it's like, it's the kind of thing where if you're if, if you see it happening all the time, it's like, if, if you can get, kind of get drawn into it. And like the more activities that you see going on around you, the more likely you are to have your interest peak. So having, uh, that active transportation, whether you're in a wheelchair or a skateboard or you're running or whatever, having a safe way to get people of all abilities and ages all throughout the city, I think is a high priority. Um, and another one that I'm not hearing mentioned that much, and I know there's some work on it is basically we're on the Clackamas River and we have these like, we have this really incredible like resource of like water recreation sitting right by us. And there's only a couple, it's, it's a, it's a little tricky to, to navigate right now. And I think that it would be kind of, it's, it, I think it'd be worth prioritizing. Um, you know, making that more of a feature and, you know, having like, uh, safe and easy access into water and different, and water recreation activities, everything from like fishing to paddle boarding and kayaking or getting in a boat, whatever. Um, yeah, it's about, it's made to sense.
Great.
The so in real terms, like right now, we've been looking at like trying to put a pickleball course, so or court somewhere in the city. Really, we have no like usable park space for that. And it's not very big. The splash pad, which was sixty by sixty, we had two options for it, you know, it was Campina or Wade Creek. That's it. We have very little, live, very little like actual park space that can like attract, like we could put amenities in right now. So we definitely do need more park space. Like, like I said, like something big, but I wouldn't diminish the 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 usability of a smaller park, like Gardner Park, that small one we just put in Cascadia Ridge. It has a small, uh, playset, you know, maintenance on it, you mow, you know, it's relatively easy, has four parking spots. Really like those parks attract the people within the neighborhood and they're great for younger families who, you know, just want to walk their kid down the street, go to the park and those, you know, those are the people who are moving out here right now. And, you know, those are the people you want to attract to the city because the more young families you have, the more people you have in the school system, every, you know, everything just gets built out. So I wouldn't, as much as like the big sports complexes are, uh, like a, a good priority, I would say I wouldn't diminish the, even a small park, even like Gardner, even if we set aside, you know, however big that park is, like per, and we had them just require something smaller, that way, you know, not only would you keep the traffic from everyone going to the one big park, every, you know, they could walk to their small park. Older people could take their dogs to the small park, you know, it gives them ability to walk around. So even if you know, you don't want to say, oh, maybe 10% is a lot, maybe it is a lot. But, you know, I would say, I would hope that, you know, even if we had just smaller, like, like even if it was just slightly smaller, those parks do play a real purpose in the city and they do provide real good for people. And I would, I think as a city, you can do two things at once. We could have, that we can plan for a big park, but we can also build developments with smaller parks to allow the people within those parks to walk, you know, go meet each other, build community and like build, uh, yeah, like, like community within the neighborhoods, that type of thing. They just, you know, they bring people together, whether it's a tiny park like Gardner or whether it's a big park like Wade Creek.
Yeah. Good points. And it might just be, yeah, it might not have to be a, an either or type of thing. Um, it might just be a matter of, okay, um, we're gonna focus SDCs, for example, on these bigger projects. And we're gonna focus code amendments, for example, on making sure that, um, And we're gonna focus code amendments, for example, on making sure that um subdivisions are putting in neighborhood. Neighborhood scale parks, right, that that's just an example, I don't know if that's exactly what we're gonna do, but um, but yeah, doesn't have to be an either or, it just might be. Different strategies for the different types of needs that we're identifying.
And like that, I mean, Gardner, you know, that's one lot, like, that's one house, that's one house, where you're the developer's losing, is that really gonna hurt their bottom line? I I don't really think so.
And yeah, look, I think you got everybody.
Right, thank you, that was all great input, um, and I'm just gonna do a time check, I think that clock needs to be changed, it is eight.
Right on, right on time for wrapping up.
Um, yeah, so I do want to, I just want to say our next, our next question was. If you have preferences or feedback on what types of engagement you think this type of project. The full-scale project should include, um, we're gonna want to hear that, and if you, I mean. We're, we're all here, you know, if we could keep it to like ten minutes and just hear everyone's top priority. Or maybe you're not sure and you're just open to whatever we want to propose to that, um, but yeah, do you want to say? Keep it to ten minutes or or?
Just trying to do as quick as we can, good.
I'll start, I think, uh, yeah, I would have going forward is let's survey the communities that are directly impacted more recently from this and. Like, just hear directly from those communities what it was like for them, they're the ones that are gonna be able to tell you the real-time parking issue, the real-time transient. Population issue, the their stresses, what what was revealed to them, what wasn't, right? Like, we could, like you said, all the lessons you guys learned, if we start with these communities, Faraday, Campanella, these other places that are brand new. That will give you a real good pulse on going forward, like, how do we avoid the sticker shop, essentially, right?
Targeted surveying.
And also, I think, you know, community outreach in general, I think we need to have more of that, you know, you've run into, you know, what it can be like, I'm sure. So uh, I I think getting more of that, more input from the community will help us in the future, and they feel a part of it, it's all together. So that would be my hope that we would go that route, too, anybody else?
And then just to add to it, if we could, you know, maybe in that community survey. Ask the community what their top priorities are, if they would like to see more community parks or more neighborhood private parks or whatnot. Um, you know, I don't know how you want to conduct the survey, have it, you know, on a scale of one to ten, no, doesn't matter, but um. So finding out first what, you know, what sort of pickups they've had in the past, stumbling blocks, roadblocks, frustrations, whatnot. Um, what they've liked about community parks, neighborhood parks, um, what's worked, what hasn't worked, and then what would they like to see in the future? So, um, but yeah.
So one thing that I'd like to see um on any surveys or anything that we do moving forward is uh, um. That we capture the, we capture the, you know, the people's information that are that are. You know, doing the surveys that are, you know, commenting at open house, we capture these in for the their information, so that when we compile all of this information moving forward. We're not just, say, we've got, you know, thirty, thirty, thirty people that have all said the same thing, but if it's those same third, you know, the. It's the same ten people at three different, you know, uh, three different aspects that are saying this, you know, you really can't can't count that as thirty people. You can only count that as ten, so I'd just like to be able to find a way to compile the information to get the, you know. If if I were to do the survey, I were to attend the open house and I were to do to um put in, you know, online paper. Or paper comment box, you know, compile that information so that you're not counting me three times. You know, you're counting me as one time, because, you know, really, my my opinions should only count that one time, not three, you know, three times. So, that's all.
I I think it'd be a good idea to go to the parks on a sunny day and get some feedback from the people that are using the community parks and the smaller parks, too. See where they're coming from to to utilize them, and and then take that opportunity and maybe ask them the type of parks that they would, cuz those are people that are actually getting out and using them. It'd be nice to get feedback from the people that are utilizing them to to see what they would like to see, what things are there, are we missing? And uh what attracted them to the location that they're at, what did they like about that location, what don't they like? What are some of the troubles they're having in accessing that, um, do they feel it's safe to kids to come, just compile that and go out there to them instead of. Just to try to increase the participation rate from from feedback from citizens.
Yeah, so I I I agree with that, and just anything that we can do to reduce the friction of getting information from people and like, make it. Like, easy and make people feel like they have, you know, some agency rather than um just being like, here's a menu and fix some things. Um, mainly because if we have a high barrier of entry to get this information from people. The only ones who are going to go through with it are going to be the people who have more extreme opinions. Whereas if if we make this really easy for everyone to answer, and we're really going out to people, and I like the idea of like actually going to parks and just trying to hit people up. Um, then we're going to get a, you know, a more like even keeled, realistic opinion from the actual community. And not just the people who are willing to go out of their way to give us their a piece of their mind.
Uh, I will say, I actually do do that a lot, and I do as I go through parks, but I actually think this is where parks can help the council a lot. We actually have, you know, we have our, a lot of city events coming up this summer, we have five concerts, we have our arts in the park. Uh, as of right now, we're gonna try to go to more city events, like if art is having something, we're gonna set up a parks booth, so, you know, I think it. That like those types of situations are great times to be able to like canvas people, have them fill out a survey, and then we can retain those for the city. And then maybe we we help with outreach and do that type of thing, just organically as we hold events, or like Oktoberfest, we could set up a a little. Uh, pop-up, put a table down, you know, introduce people to like the Questicada thing, uh, the app that Stephen made for the city to like go to all the parks. We could advertise those types of things, and we could do a lot of canvassing and get a lot of feedback during those events, so I think it's a good place for Parks and Rec to be a part of that.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a great point, and that is something that would not have to wait until hiring a consultant, like. I think Counselor Hughes was just saying, you know, um, it would be great to have community input on what these goals and priorities are. That should be guiding this project, um, and yeah, if it's possible for, I mean, the city has excellent volunteers. We have the DEC just met this morning, the Traffic and Public Safety Committee is really, they're like ready to go out and help out with stuff, you know? I think it would be great if if you wanted to, if the council wanted to kind of make a move on some of this outreach this summer. Even if you don't move forward with a consultant until later, um, you can be gathering that input and kind of just have it on hand. And summer's really the best time to do that, cuz people are out in these spaces and these events are happening, um, and then by the time you're going and hiring a consultant. You really have those goals pretty well solidified, or you've got at least a pretty clear idea of it.
And like, a good example, uh, like, we did a survey for the pickleball courts, where I met the uh David Judd. Uh, you know, I I printed out a ten, ten-word surveys, handed it to him, he took it to his church, handed it out to everyone who plays pickleball. They all filled them out, and I got, I mean, forty, fifty households to respond over one issue, so I think, yeah, doing it that way would be pretty good.
Okay, I'm trying to keep an eye on the time, we're at um eight oh nine P M, any last comments or questions? This has been really, really productive, I'm super appreciative to all of you in the room and everyone online for joining and giving us input. And I have our email and phone number on the screen, um, yeah, it might, the life of this full project is probably gonna be pretty long. So I just want to remind everyone that as with any issue that we work on, um. If you've got ideas or questions or suggestions, please, by all means, let us know, email us, you don't have to wait until a public meeting to talk about an issue that's happening. Or a project, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this workshop is adjourned.